To allow for the use of properties within the Village Center as breweries and distilleries, I think should be added in there a conditional use. So with that, that change. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll motion.
To accept the minutes?
Made the motion, then Ryan, second, to accept the minutes for March 25th. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Okay. I didn't know Willa Randolph was gonna be here.
I don't think I saw that either.
Okay, since Randolph is not here, I guess the county updates, we will have to pass on that. Dave, updates from the council?
Sure, some of the things that happened at the beginning of April at our town council meeting. As you may have heard, and may have even mentioned it, that the code enforcement officer and the town council, we are now actively working on vehicle issues within town. So we received some complaint letters, anonymous complaint letters about, you know, some of the properties in town and vehicles. And so we started the process to take a harder look at that and see if we can't clean that up. At least maybe drive our residents to start cleaning that up with us, without us having to take so many, move in legal methods. But we are starting with some trailers that are parked on roadways, and we'll be sending out some letters and citations, trying to get these residents to comply with the rules for that. And then we're going to be taking a look at some of the vehicles, at least the process for the vehicles that are in yards and kind of just repair, non-operational type vehicles that are kind of an eyesore for the community. So we're working on that. So Joan, the code enforcement officer, and Michelle have been working diligently on some letters. And of course, we would be very happy if residents that receive those letters would just do the right thing and move those out without us having to take it to the next course of action. However, the town council is in agreement right now that if we need to move it into a legal avenue, that we do have the appetite to do that right now. So that's ongoing. At the town council meeting, we had a resident from Snyder's Summit that came and had some discussions with the town council and the mayor about concerns with the water bill. A lot of the typical concern we hear, you know, the water bill is too high. Did not have a thorough understanding of the base rates and how they worked and how our water bills were calculated and things like that. I think the council and the mayor did an admirable job explaining the situation and what we're doing, where we've been, where we've come, how far we've come, you know, the mandates from the, although I'm not sure, you know, that it was totally heard. And, you know, when you want your water bill lowered and you hear all these things that you can't get it lowered, it's, but that's...
That's all you hear, you can't get it lowered.
Yeah, so that's the way it is. So we did have that discussion. The thing we just talked about in the minutes, the Village Center conditional use addition. I brought it up to the council. The council, you know, nodded their head to move that forward. So Michelle is working on the ordinance to allow breweries and distilleries. Michelle's working that, will probably, you know, the work session thing, have a little more discussion and have a draft or have the ordinance ready to go. And we'll push that forward as it moves on. We had a resolution, no change to the water and sewer base rates for FY '25. So the council, again, that's two years in a row, we froze the base rates for the water and sewer rates, base rates. We introduced the FY '25 budget, so we took care of that. And I guess it's our council meeting on May 1st will have a hearing and move that budget into the approval process. I met with the investor, the contractors, the architects, and the civil engineers for the Dillman Inn project. This is for the gentleman who was, is considering putting the distillery there. So he had his whole cadre of project leads available over there. We did another walkthrough of the project, and he's certainly serious about it. This was to take a hard look at it so the engineers could really make decisions on the structure of it. So the structural engineer who was supposed to be there wasn't able to, but they took loads of pictures and did a lot of in-depth looking. So that continues to move. And I also met with the electrician and did the walkthrough of 211 High Street, the old town hall, the old fire hall. That's in, as we talked last month, as the town and fire department are looking at turning that building into apartments for, hopefully for volunteer fire department members that could have a lower income place, apartment to live here in town, whether they serve on the volunteer fire department. So we are gathering all the estimates from construction and electricians and all those kind of things. And so that's also, we can have a pretty good rough estimate as we apply for grants for that. So we have a group of people on the task force from the fire department and the town who are, you know, trying to steer this through. So I think that's the highlights that I wanted to bring you on that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Say while you're discussing things, Springdale Prep?
Okay, yeah, I can discuss that too. The town met, the town and our attorney and public works director, there was a whole group of us.
Speaking of a cadre, yes.
We all met with a bunch of members from the Springdale Prep School and their architect and several other people they had working for them. And they gave us their 10-year vision. So they had an architect, three members, I think, of their architectural team from North Carolina that were up, and they had a presentation for us and lots of pretty pictures and other things of where they envisioned the school being in 10 years from now. The 10-year plan, you know, it's probably in actuality, you know, a 20-year plan. And of course, it's all dependent on the amount of kids that continue to go to the school. They mentioned they had 140 students. That surprised me, I never, didn't know there was 140. They believe they have 60 more coming here by the end of summer, so, don't know. But they have the whole Main Street campus laid out. They have visions for the school down here. Now, they still don't own the school, yet they have not purchased the old middle school. And of course, you know, the town is working with the county who owns the middle school property. We're working on some water right issues, you know, we want to do some test drilling in there to, there may be some water sources that the town wants to tap in close to the town. And so, you know, we need to coordinate that with Springdale Prep and the county. And so there's an MOU floating around that we're trying to get signed so that we can go do that test drilling. But anyway, they gave us their 10-year plan. They have lots of buildings. I think I counted maybe nine new buildings that they have slated up on the main campus, kind of terraced down, including, not an amphitheater, a theater-type building closer to 31 and Main, you know, 800 seat, I think he talked about.
I don't get the swimming pool.
Yes.
That's a lot of space.
I may not be, I may not be around when all that ever happens, but they have a vision. And I think it's good that they have a vision, that they should, they should have a vision for their school and their property. But, so, I don't know what else I can ask Michelle. If there's anything that maybe stuck in your mind that you want to mention that I didn't?
Only that the execution of that, a project of that extensive nature will likely require many, many hours of discussion. We may have things in our code that need to be looked at and possibly modified. So, watch this space.
Yes, and I guess I should have mentioned that, you know, the water and sewer issues that go along with that are paramount concern for the town, right? Was mentioned, yes.
Being that they don't own any of this yet, what is their plan to actually acquire the properties?
They own the Main Street. They just don't own the old middle school.
They, I believe, fully intend to purchase the school. However, they've kicked the can down the road, at least.
I believe there have been two extensions, but there may only be one. Right now, the lease that is in effect runs through December of this year.
Yes, so.
Put it out there that if, the company that I work for, I don't know if they would actually bid on anything, but I would have to recuse myself if any of that ever were to come along that we bid on a job or something like that. So I won't be able to take part in any of those discussions or anything like that, so.
I think we're a bit away from bidding.
Yeah, just putting it out there, so.
No, it's good to know.
Fair enough.
So the four-inch line that they were, had submitted paperwork, is that still?
So, so the town is still working with them to do a new water line through the campus up on Main Street. However, they owe the town much information before any of that takes place. They, we have done some things, we've, this is all for, because there's gonna, dorms up there, there is dorms up there, but they have to sprinkle, sprinkler system those. And so that requires, you know, a volume of water that requires a bigger line, and there had to be tests and all that kind of stuff done. So they have a lot of hurdles that they have not gone through yet. And I'm not sure why they started down the road without seeking the guidance and coordination with the town. But nonetheless, you can only go so far without that, so.
Yeah, I understand, it kind of sprung on Gary as a total surprise.
Yes. Unfortunately, Gary was not at the meeting. He was unable to attend at the last minute, so we didn't.
Wayne did yeoman service on behalf of the public works department.
Okay, thank you, Dave, for the updates.
You're welcome.
Randolph, you made it, you didn't miss too much because we were kind of, didn't realize it was low after six when we got started, I might pick up from there, I turned it on. Updates from the county, what, anything to report?
Um, yeah, so the three items that were reported last month, the water and sewer, spring update is in progress right now, it's accepting applications for that. So if you guys have any need of that forward, that's the time to do so. The second item is a housing study that's ongoing right now. As far as New Windsor's concerned, we're planning to have a booth at the carnival, Levee by Mosaic, to kind of case some of the housing, some of the issues that some citizens may have with housing, some areas that they think could be a baseline, just to get a baseline for New Windsor citizens. So that's for housing study. And the last thing was just a report that's still ongoing. But you guys have submitted everything on your side, so. And that's gonna go to MUP on early July, July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The spring update that's in progress, I assume that the county's been in touch with Gary for any?
Yeah.
Okay. And secondly, the housing study, I know we talked about it a little bit about it last month, but the booth at the carnival, there, what kind of information are they looking for about housing in town?
So from my understanding, Mosaic, they put together a survey, and one of the survey questions is where do you see opportunities for, I think they use the term affordable housing. So areas for affordable housing. And I think another question that they're gonna pose from the survey was either issues finding housing or the, kind of the makeup, the affordability of the housing that exists. So kind of availability and then the price points of the housing that's available. I think that's what they're trying to get at.
Okay, all right, got it, thank you.
Okay, do I have any questions for Randolph? Okay, I guess we're down to the review, continuing to review the draft comprehensive plan. Emily?
Do you want that mic or you want to just use one of these? I guess you don't really need that one since there's some open tables here.
And I used my tax refund to upgrade my computer, so hopefully I can.
So you think, got the right connections?
Yep.
There should be a remote over there to turn this on. That's a good sign.
Yeah.
There we go, it worked.
Just like that, all right.
So we can see what?
Yeah.
And then it didn't. It was there for a moment.
It wasn't my fault, huh?
Do you have the USB plugged in with the HDMI?
You must update this app to launch it.
All right.
But the second sentence there. Yeah, that was the second sentence there. Might want to have someone pay attention to that.
I saw that.
Oh, we saw it, yeah.
It wasn't done before the person clicked that, so I figured, thank you.
Watch a little TV?
No, we don't want to do that.
Well, we're not going Netflix, are we?
Do you have both the USB and HDMI plugged in?
I've got the HDMI, I didn't think I needed the USB.
The US.
Let me get out here so I can actually see what I'm doing.
See what's going on.
And I put my green ones on so I can wait to load. No signal. It was there.
It was there, we saw it.
I saw it, it wiggled up.
Turn it off, turn it back on, that's what I would do. Turn it back on.
I unplugged it and plugged it back in.
Press the, there's a button on the remote. What's that, another, another input? Could be HDMI 2.
Okay, let's try this.
Either off or HDMI 2. Setting, change to HDMI R.
Let's go, let's try.
That's HDMI 2. So it's 3. You're on one before, right?
I'm just clicking the button on this, thank you.
Well, something came up on your machine over here.
I would take one of your back to connection. So.
Like a plan.
It's just changing the aspect ratio on this.
Oh.
But let me try, let's see, system settings. Yeah, it keeps trying to change the aspect ratio, so it's trying to connect to something.
I have no idea what that means.
I would go up on to connection, on the outside. Is it one? Is it one? It's pretty good.
No signal. No signal.
There's a third.
No signal.
I went to the DVI, I guess. It's, no, the one right below, they shouldn't.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna try one more time. This is ridiculous. It was connected, it showed my screen.
I know, we saw it.
We saw something, yeah.
Power of advice and cable connection status, or press the, what is the button?
On your remote.
Change to another input.
What's it? No, it says PC.
Yeah, I would think it's on two, because that says PC.
No signal. Yes, it's no signal, how does it pick up that it's, first device is up going?
I don't, I don't speak the language, I hold no currency, so I'll just sit over here.
Should I maybe move, see if there's another cable?
This says HDMI 1 and DVD.
Okay.
So you have two here. Yeah, and what? That's probably HDMI, this is, one's an HDMI and one's a.
LAN, yeah.
DVI. No, HDMI, no, yeah, one's just LAN.
But I pulled on this one and it made things go, it pulled things down, so I don't want this one.
Oh, this one here.
Yeah.
Our connections, always. This brings him to the blue, that brings him to that. That's what's coming out of this.
Yeah, baby, I am with you.
No signal.
I always wanted to be the AV guy at school, but they never picked me.
And my laptop resolution keeps changing, so it's like, it knows that something's going on, and yet.
The TV does.
It did for a moment though, that's the frustrating thing.
You want to try my computer on there just to see if it?
Yeah.
I'm thinking that this cord isn't plugged in yet.
Yeah, well, that's LAN, that's not gonna do anything.
That's not, okay.
You can plug this back into the slot on the box. You know, I went to the trouble of upgrading.
I just plugged them both in.
Yeah, okay.
I unplugged them and plugged them both in, that's because I was always taught unplug, plug back in. They tell you to do what they call.
Yeah, and I did the screen refresh button.
And there's a reason for that, there really is, capacitors hold power. So I do accept that, that, even though I've already done it before, I've called them because they always.
Yeah, because that's the first thing they tell you, oh, no, really? I never would have thought of that.
Yeah. And then it's the blue wire.
I still like the olden days when you just hit it on the side and it came back.
That was TV check.
That was TV, it always were.
I was in seventh grade.
We didn't have a color TV until I was in college, we didn't have cable till I was in seventh grade.
My granddad had the color TV, we didn't.
No, we didn't have a color TV. I do remember when cable came out, though, I was in college.
Seventh grade was 1990.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You didn't have a remote because the kids could get up and change.
Right, what's the point, get up, that's what I have children for.
Exactly, and we didn't change for commercials, that wasn't really done, you just watched.
Yeah, just leave them on, that's when you go to the bathroom.
Right, that's exactly, you go to the bathroom, you fill up your glass.
Or something, there's no pause in the show.
Nope.
But as an exennial, I also am in the era of, I don't want to give up my DVDs of TV shows.
I have so many of those, of course, I still have, you know, like.
I have CD.
The CDs, yeah, I have albums, baby.
I have albums too, but.
You can't even, I went to loan a DVD to, while we're killing time, my sons, my daughter-in-law, we were talking about this movie, and I said, well, I have it, I'll loan it to you. So he was in the neighborhood, came by and picked it up, and he looks at it and he says, "Well, I guess we can borrow a DVD player." I said, pardon me? He said, "No, we..."
I would see Lenny and Goose spend $25 to buy a portable, you always have one.
He said, "No, we don't, I think her parents have one, though." I felt like, you know, I have, yeah, really, right with my, with my high-button shoes and the little hook that I would put them together on.
Well, the number of zoomers and whatever generation comes after those zoomers that don't know what a floppy disk is and, you know, what the save icon on, like Word and stuff, and think, oh, what is that?
Yes. But people still say dial, even though you're pushing.
And hang up.
Some things are embedded in the language. Some things are just irksome.
Let me try one more time, just. All right, this is all anti-Mac. It's because I'm using a Mac, I know.
Oh, I wonder if that could be, but you used it last time, didn't you?
I used Ace. I upgraded my Mac to actually have one with an HDMI because I used my tax refund because my other Mac was seven years old, and I think it was time to upgrade.
So it could be, you might need, it's like Mac Share or something on that to do that, I don't.
You want to send me the latest version?
And I'll open it up and we'll see if I connect.
I know.
I almost crossed here, but I sit down, I gotta see him sometime.
I have to tell you, my Mac lasted seven years when a PC would last about two and a half, so. I have to tell you, my Mac lasted seven years when a PC would last about two and a half, so...
I'm on five on my Dell. But I must admit, it's slowing down.
Aren't we all?
My, my work computer, that's what my boss said, you're not so fast yourself, I said, I'm just downloading.
This is flickering and driving me crazy, let me get them talking. Come on. I'm using my phone as a hotspot. All right, I just sent it.
So it's just off in county level. Don't give me much turnover. Ah, yeah, it's funny you say that. Our, one of our employees is just in the nation.
Oh.
Ooh, in planning?
Right.
Ooh, where's he going?
Wow.
He's going to CLSI.
Oh, I don't see.
Oh, is he really?
Yeah, so we're having form plates. It's tough, because he's the only person we have, so...
Well, they can't, they can't seem to hire somebody to replace the lawyer that left. I was talking to Tim, he says, they just, they get resumes, I'm graduating in May, you know, excuse me, no, we need, we need somebody. It's benefiting me, because, you know, I get to go and go to the meetings, but I'm amazed, because it was like September when Jim left.
Right, right.
I'm surprised, it seems like a good position for him.
I have no idea what they pay on a full-time basis, but, and he says to me, you want to come back? I say, no, don't want to come back? Like to come for a while, couple times a month, I'm good with that.
So would that be like a real estate lawyer, that would look that type of, type of...
It's very, it's actually kind of just general governmental, you learn, unless you are leaving another governmental entity, and even if you are, I left another governmental entity when I came up here. There's planning stuff, there's contractual stuff, it really depends on what offices within the building, what departments you work with. I did water, I worked for the Water Board in New Orleans, so when I came up here, I worked with the water and sewer people and utilities and that kind of stuff, because I was at least familiar with the language. But they haven't got anybody to do the planning commission, so I've been doing it. Yeah.
So they fill in the ranks or they're on an advertising...
Well...
You think it left, did you think it went?
Are they?
Did it go? I haven't got anything yet.
Yeah, I sent it. Dee Hoffman.
At new windsor dot M D dot O N.
Technology.
It's pretty far.
I have to go around the world every time.
Yeah, well, I'm using my phone as a hotspot, which might have something to do with it.
I always thought that was a place where the good bar was a hotspot. That's what, you'll notice, this chair has not chimed in at all on suggestions of what to do, other than hitting it on the side.
I'd like to be a water.
I'm sure there's a similar meeting there.
Very attractive, very nice, one of those little cabanas on the side.
Places we would like to live.
I'm not sure about that, that looks like...
It's supposed to be beautiful, I'm not sure I'd go anywhere nowadays. I really don't know that I would.
Yeah, going to the islands. So watch out for pirates.
I'm going to Elkton, you know, that's exciting.
There's pirates in Elkton.
There probably are, probably, pretty wild, it's sort of near the water, you know, kinda.
Too far. Pax River. Just for here.
Okay.
Slowly I turned.
I am so frustrated right now. Let's try again.
We are not finding the server right now.
Of course not.
We'll build one first. Dell's coming in for a quarter.
That would make it all too easy.
Mark, come be Bobbinins, we've been waiting for you.
There I be, bye! We're done now. Yeah, we finished the whole thing, we're fine, you know, we're gonna send it to the state next week. But while we're hanging around, what is the next step, Randolph? I know that the state has to review the plan once we get it in reviewable shape.
Yeah.
Do we do that, the, does the county do that, is that a long process, do you have any idea?
Um, I know there's a 60-day review, and as far as I know, I don't think the county...
I wouldn't think you would, I'm just, you know...
Yeah, I don't think the county would, if anything... Yeah, I think...
Because we don't have any annexations that are trouble or anything like that.
I think that'll kind of be on me to kind of listen and give comments while...
Yeah. Once we're there, and there's a public hearing before this body and the electates, or just this body? Because that's changed since the last time I was involved in one of these.
I'm not sure, but I can confirm.
Well, I can confirm that, I don't think we're quite ready to do that this week.
Okay, my laptop is recognizing the LG TV, it's showing as an optional display.
But the TV evidently does not want to participate. Keeps buzzing, though.
Yeah, well, that's my phone.
On the Walkersville, there's a parcel, right now it's an ag that's sitting there. Their resume, I just told them, anyway, they recommended putting that in for development, and they had the hearing, the council had the hearing, oh, big backlash, and they sent the whole comprehensive plan back to the planning commission.
There was some big kerfuffle, I think it was before Randolph came out here, several years ago now. And I don't know if it was the whole plan, or if it was just the Freedom Area Plan, but that back and forth, and the counselor, the commissioners tossed it back to the, it was county issue, it wasn't one of the municipalities. And I don't really remember, but I do remember thinking, boy, I hope I'm not involved in one of those. I don't, I think ultimately it was, you know, resolved in-house, but there was lots of saber rattling for a little while. Uh-oh.
Still not coming up?
I had to restart.
Let's always look who's talking.
Hey, you need to go back and sit down, lots of little Ben and scream, that's why that one beeped up and...
Very likely, very likely.
It was all you guys, you guys, it was all your fault.
Tipped the room the wrong way.
That's how we got around here.
Guys, you're magnetized everywhere, you're right here, we suck in signal.
All right.
Looks like. Keeps coming back to a little TV.
Yeah.
It's a temptation. I don't think I'd want to walk up those steps.
Yeah, but then think of all the chocolate you would have earned by the time you get up there.
Your point is well taken.
Okay.
It's that in the lower right corner, red dash.
So it show hide.
Nope.
Yep, you and me both. By now I would have called my husband and says, can you explain this to me?
Let's just scroll through the inputs and see.
But now they check, that shows something's... There was a lot of TV. What's the news? Wait, wait.
God, you don't want to see the news.
Okay, so it's not the Mac.
Well, we've eliminated one thing.
All right, so we're coming out of the TV.
No, the TV on channel three.
TV yellow cable.
We're really all dating ourselves very badly with things like that.
This is going over this way. Come up here. You see a yellow cable?
Yellow cable. That's the ethernet. So that won't, that won't connect to the TV, the TV needs the HDMI, which is what's connected. And I've tried one, two, and three.
Is there anything to activate on your Mac?
Well, I've hit the, I've hit the screen share button, the Ctrl F5.
I don't know anything about that, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, and I've hit the equivalent on the PC.
Oh, sorry, the PC now installed.
Yeah.
So it sounds to me like it's not.
So it's not the Mac, we've eliminated my lap, my new laptop.
I think it's television.
Turn off, unplug.
Oh, I don't want to be responsible for that. We'll let Dave be responsible for that.
Let's leave it plugged in, and we'll turn the TV off and then turn it back on.
Cables look like they're connected all the way over from the TV.
Yeah.
Gotta wait that 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Otherwise Kevin gets mad.
The text got cheese.
Okay, switch the inputs again.
We just watch a movie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back to HDMI two, which is the one I believe that's connected. Nope.
We can't even just like walk down to Uncle Matty's and have a beer, you know, because he's closed.
Are those computers connected to the same laptop that you used?
Mine is, my laptop is connected to my phone as a hotspot, but I think Dave's is.
Sure about how we boss or audience and Cheryl either.
I would...
The whole one person being my roommate.
I don't know, I think they're calling in to tell us how to do this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really hear the phone ringing madly back there.
Well, Dave, uh, Mark's phone, the guy's probably trying to call Mark.
Oh, yeah. And he keeps getting, I'm driving, you know, the auto, the auto reply. Thanks for calling, I'm driving.
Anybody else have any other ideas? Tried both computers, we know mine worked last time.
Yeah, so I'm thinking it's either the cord or the TV. And I don't think it's the cord, because we've tried the other cord in my laptop.
And there, I guess there's no other like cord of TVs around here.
Serve, I doubt it.
And we saw it when she first plugged it in.
Yeah.
So we did see it.
It just doesn't want to cooperate, you don't understand, these machines, they run the world. They let us think that we run the world.
Yeah, directly. We change the input.
Yeah, we change the input. And after that, you have exhausted the extent of my AV and PC knowledge. I'm pretty sure Dave said that was one, but we'll kind of go through three just to...
Say you did.
Yeah.
But see there now, they can't figure it out. There, oh.
But it's got a X. Not ordinarily a good sign.
Anybody else?
That is Justin Rod.
Oh, we should, right.
Yeah, I suppose if somebody wants to stand on a chair, we could try hardwiring it, rather than plugging it up to the wall. And I did not just say that on something that's going to go out broadcast.
Well, you can bring my computer right over and just plug it right in.
And suggest an ocean violation.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know which is worse, the standing on the chair part, or the trying without the people who actually run the system during the week to hardwire it to the TV. Somebody might, it might kill you.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, a chair with wheels, please.
Watch this whole video, this is...
A chair with wheels.
Drew?
Yeah.
Check that room right beside you for a laugh.
Can we turn the cameras off?
I don't know how to turn the cameras off.
If there's anybody out there in TV land...
Do not try this at home.
Stop, stop buying helpless fixes.
There's a ladder in there.
I really, I really wish... I really, I really wish I weren't seeing this.
Which input is that?
Should be one.
Okay. Nope.
Maybe the whole internet is down everywhere. It's always my fallback position.
Actually, let's try waking the laptop up and then doing it again. No.
Hooking directly? Even, even hooking it directly?
Yeah. And that is, well, I'll just scroll through them. Oh, there it goes.
There's something.
Maybe a cable, because that's the same cable.
So you get to stand there for the next hour.
Unplug it.
So is that cable, what's that cable plugged up? We got a hog on one of the plugs in that spot?
So it will be that cable.
So it's something to do with whatever the wiring is behind the scenes, because doing it directly works. Yes. Okay. Well, that wasted a lot of time.
I'm gonna have to come over here, you know, at like 8:45 tomorrow morning and explain to Dana what we've done here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hope Ryan says it all back up the way it was. Just flip-flopping. I'm sure he did, that's what I'm doing.
You can just leave that there. He's going to have to go back.
True.
Okay, so since this chapter, we decided we're going to skip until we get actual data. And then land use and growth management.
That's where you think we stopped off?
That's where I think we stopped off. I could. Where was it? No, we actually stopped on chapter six.
So that, all that physical implication and all that, we deleted?
Yeah, let me. I'm opening an editable version because it wasn't in the original. Okay, so here we are, municipal growth. So we deleted everything with relate, related to past growth patterns. Is HB 1141 still relevant?
I don't know things by numbers. Okay, 1141 is the requirement that we have a municipal growth.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I would word it necessarily that way, but this is the, we don't need all of that stuff. And 66B isn't called that anymore.
Okay.
I think you might want to just say something like, you know.
That's the land use article.
Yeah. Land use is what it's called now, yeah. The last sentence in that first, the first paragraph there about joint with the county is probably not a bad idea, but I don't think we need all the rest of that. Or even past growth pattern for that, for that matter, but that's just me.
Okay. I will mark on my version to just get rid of everything but the last sentence. Okay. And then this has all been deleted? I kind of like the unique character and sense of place language.
In number two. I don't really think there's anything in there that's changed since whenever we did this. 15 years ago.
So the last paragraph, not, oh, there you go. The last sentence, I'm sorry.
There's something going on formatting wise that's on yours and not mine. I'm not sure why.
The last sentence, areas for residential development. Support the town's desire to logically extend the municipal boundaries in matter of that, the town's character. It is, we already did that.
What?
Did we kill that?
So get rid of this.
So areas for residential development support the town's desire to logically extend the municipal boundaries. We don't have any.
I don't think we have a desire to extend the municipal boundaries.
We've extended it, however.
Unless. I don't, I never know what direction to point in.
Then it looks like it really shouldn't be two paragraphs, because then it goes from, it is the town's policy.
No, this is a formatting thing that's on his version and not mine, and I'm not sure what's going on.
Price mentioned there's a property south of the growth area that may command initially.
That's, that's where we're pointing, but we're not sure, I'm not sure where.
He actually told me recently that he heard that they're definitely working next week.
Well, you know, it would be so nice if people would actually tell us what their plans are. I'm coming to dinner on Saturday, didn't you know?
Mayor Marcus and the dating and have it, go in there and discuss it. And it comes out there. And their next step was to, they were interested, they were supposed to get on our agenda here and do something, have a discussion with us so that we could, you know, start the process or have a discussion and see if we wanted to start the process or any of that. That has never happened.
But you might not want to foreclose that.
We don't, you know, certainly want to foreclose anything, right? Do they know what kind of this meeting made right now?
I believe, I believe so. I can't ever attest to what someone else knows. I was not at that meeting either. I found out about it, you know, because they don't want to, very understandably, pay me to sit around and listen to stuff. But, so I don't know, but that was quite a while back. I mean, not five years, but quite a while.
Something they'd be pursuing without the possibility of annexation or?
Well, from what Price was saying, it didn't seem like they knew that the growth area had to be extended.
They have, I don't think they understood exactly how many hoops they were looking at.
So I don't.
So if they stay within the county, okay, they can only develop one house per move.
I'm assuming that's our 40 out there?
Correct, right.
At the county level?
So that would not be advantageous.
Yeah.
Financially advantageous.
Not necessarily. I, at a very recent planning commission meeting, there were a couple of properties that wanted out of planning of, of the water and sewer areas. I don't remember exactly where they were, but I remember they talked about it. Because that kind of development may bring in more money, but it is more expensive to do in that process and they wanted, they wanted shed of it all and they went from, they went back to, it was some kind of conserv, it was a conservation zoned property. So they were just going to go back and build some, you know, McMansions and call it a day.
Alright, so, so we don't want to cut our nose off to spider face, so if those words need to stay there to lend itself.
I'm inclined to leave that there.
If someone comes to us and we consider that, that we have the ability to manage property.
It certainly doesn't mandate it, nothing mandates it.
But as of right now, just to close that discussion, it is in their court to come to the planning commission and start initial dialogue. We are not going to them to do that, they need to come to us. And if we get all the way through this comprehensive plan and they never come to us, we cannot just arbitrarily say, hey, let's annex that property.
I don't know. That's, you wouldn't, tut, you would never do anything arbitrarily. But I think as, so long as you don't have specifics in here that you'll only annex land, you know, to the southwest or you'll only annex land that are XYZ, I don't think that the existence of the plan per se would preclude possible annexation of property in the future, do you?
No. But I said, I can't leave all that to do anything like that at this point.
No, not at this point, you wouldn't.
I think when Price was bringing that up, he just didn't want, he wanted to make sure that.
That you were aware.
Yeah, that I was aware and that everyone was aware.
And you are now seeing what I see because with the direct line, I've got my Mac plugged in. So the formatting now matches. I don't know why it looks different on Dave's. I do not understand the mysteries of electrons. So.
So what's in the sidebar is your.
Stuff that I've deleted.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. So that between the 2005 BLA, or is that weird? Yeah, we, that too many dozen need to stay.
Okay.
19-year-old studies that relevant.
And then in December 2008, we can get rid of that.
December 2008. So everything I've got highlighted, delete?
I'm still reading them. Bottom of page 52.
Oh, under number three.
Yeah, I'm wondering, do we even need 2010? No, this whole number three is pretty eight. Randall just gave the town new ELI maps.
Okay.
We are trying to, right now, recalculate the whole billboard inventory with the town so we can get a more accurate picture. So based on those new maps, maybe we need somebody to come up with a paragraph to put in there? I think it should be generic words in there that just talk about the BLI is created from the GUPPY maps. So it's definitely Carroll County apartment complaining. Well, it keeps track of our billable land inventory. So it's all based upon zoning.
And I mean, if you look at these numbers, they didn't play out that way at all.
So the new maps, it just doesn't, they don't have any corresponding tables to go with that information?
Well, see, we're, we're looking at, not for the density of the houses, we're looking at it so we can define our access for the water and sewers. So it's confusing that activation for different things. So we're not using it for what this paragraph here is talking about. And that's just residential yellow, I bet.
Yes.
Purposes for the water source.
The whole, the whole.
Yeah. The industry areas, what we could maybe, not be associated with. Yeah, I don't think we did anything with this, because this, in the next page, it talks about our future growth based on all these numbers.
Yeah, and I've got a note that Abigail needs to update, so it was very old.
Yeah. So, so we, this, this paragraph three is, is talking about, you know, adding, which we've already done. These are the new developments that we've already just completed. These are the new developments that we've already just completed. And so we would be, if we were going to keep the chart like what you see there under three, the potential for any new developments as of today, or not, four lots, whatever, in, in town.
That's pretty much it.
And that's pretty much good.
So we don't need a chart, we just put four.
Four. Thank you. Nice.
So I'll just go ahead and delete the chart. Gone. That was easy.
I guess Randall, that would be, I think, how far if we were able to see what the county has about the oil data. As far as the potential for residential development, you know, in the areas there. Just to see what, what is showing itself now. And I shouldn't find more than four. Well, I, it would be interesting. I mean, when this was created, it was saying we had sixteen in the village center.
Yeah, I.
I don't know where that could be.
They were going up that way.
Unless they were planning to raise the dealman in?
Even that wouldn't give you that many lots.
Yeah.
Because in the whole town, what would be considered a lot, I mean, the original, they were like, yeah, sixteen quarters.
Yeah.
Has that changed, like lot size?
The lot size doesn't change after the lot's been created and has a house and everything else on it. So I don't, I don't know. And I was around in 2005, but I have no idea. That, maybe that was a Barb Lully thing. I don't, I don't know.
I mean, within the, within the village center.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure what the lines are for the village center that way. I mean, are those four lots, for example, in the village center or where? The lots over there on Lambert? Yeah, see, I just don't know.
Maybe it might be, I, I would think down High Street, the railroad tracks is village center, but I'm not sure.
That way it goes.
Yeah. Lambert position, they're probably, lots are a lot larger than.
Yeah, than they are down here. But all of that says maybe because it doesn't make any sense for us now.
So if you could just check on that.
Okay, and for the time being, I've deleted the charts because I think they're moot. And then I think the town of New Windsor desires to maintain its small town character. It's at slightly more than sixteen acres. That's all, it's been done, it's been developed.
Land area needed to satisfy demand. And I don't think we've zoned any more land R1 or R2 anytime recently. That, that runs afoul of the, the various restrictions on density that allow us to get government money and there's a, there's alphabet soup that goes with that and I can't think of what it is. Land priority funding areas. So you, you know, you couldn't, can't, can't get a whole lot of money if you're talking about acre lots like R1 would be.
So I have a note that says the county worked to build the land through the GIS system.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that would be the 2023 BLI that I sent you, just created, so yeah, that's what I said.
Just like the population projected, these scenarios or is that what, I'll be, that's, that's staying in or?
It wasn't something that y'all initially asked me to delete, but quite frankly, I think it's obsolete at this point.
It's so obsolete.
Yeah.
I don't know why we would want to give population scenarios since we really aren't projecting for any growth at this point. We don't have.
Okay, it's gone.
Michelle, you're, I mean, just well, Ron burning any bridges there, getting rid of that?
No, I, I, I think a projection from twenty years ago that didn't happen doesn't make a whole lot of sense to include. And one of the reasons I wouldn't bother, or I wouldn't, I wouldn't be terribly concerned about projecting into the future is because obviously there's limited utility in that, in that function.
Yeah, and I'll say that when I read, like, I read the plans from, like, Union Bridge and Brunswick and some of the other small towns in Maryland, and they were substantially less comprehensive than this one. Now, kudos to the comprehensiveness of this one.
This is a Barb Lully plan, very definitely, for those of me who remember her.
But I also.
She was a county planner.
Get away with, if you compare to, like, Brunswick or Union Bridge or some of the other small towns in Maryland that are, I think, on par with New Windsor, a lot less.
Again, number five is similar.
Yeah, I think so.
Land area needed to satisfy the demand for development. We don't really have it. So I think the whole chapter we're doing is municipal growth.
We could, we could just.
We, we have no growth. We just want to make sure that there's words there.
That allow us.
Allow us to have growth, that the opportunity shows itself.
Okay, so.
Maybe.
You know, I'm looking at that section five. The third paragraph down might really, I don't want to necessarily say all you need, but would certainly satisfy some of that.
Could this be combined with another chapter?
Probably.
Such as land use and growth management?
Well. I want to call it municipal growth and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
As a longtime bureaucrat, this is going to be reviewed by longtime bureaucrats. And they got a checklist and it's going to say municipal growth. And if it doesn't say municipal growth, they might have to look.
Okay.
So I think call it, you could call it municipal growth and whatever else you just said, land use, but I want, I think municipal growth should be in there because it's on a checklist, I guarantee you.
Land use and municipal growth.
That is perfect.
Okay. Because basically municipal growth at this point is growth management.
Yes.
So Michelle, you were talking about paragraph three, the.
Town and the county C.
That's, yes.
That's kind of general.
That's very general.
General happy talk.
And now, chapter, paragraph two, we still have that, the, the line industrial, that is developable, right?
Yeah, but I'm not sure how much of it, like a hundred and seventy acres now, is that, is that accurate? I just don't know. If these numbers, a hundred and four acres to conservation land, I don't, I don't, I don't know where that is, but Gary could probably tell me or maybe Ed. And, and the last sentence in that second paragraph about land and the unincorporated portions of the CPA for neighborhood business, I don't even understand where in that there would be neighborhood business. And if that was contemplating the Hibbert property, it wasn't five acres and it wasn't neighborhood business. In the event, which, you know, was after this. So I would pick it out.
I think we should just keep the, the verbiage, you know, we want the verbiage that we want. High levels of office will allow us to do future growth if needed, then all this other old stuff.
Well, and then coming down that same page, the town's biggest constraint to development is water and sewer capacity. So that, you know, those two lines, and put a period after capacities and don't put it's unlikely that necessary improvements are going to occur because we're going to win a lot, we, we're going to win the lottery and we're going to do everything. See what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. I am tracking all of this. So what I'm hearing is to keep some of the, some of the language with regard to the vision for growth and the constraints for growth folded into chapter five and retitle chapter five.
Maybe do something this way.
Yes.
Or if you just.
If you want them alphabetical.
Yes.
Or, you know. Yeah.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying.
Anything with regard to public schools, aside from the fact that we no longer have New Windsor Middle School? And I don't know that these numbers are accurate either.
I'm confident they're not.
I, I printed out the concurrency. Did you get any, what I?
I might have. I'll have to check my spam.
If not, here.
Okay.
I just printed out the whole 2022.
Fantastic. Great. That looks like what I see on Wiki.
Yeah.
Again, don't know how accurate that is.
Okay, now, you have probably more, what I've got was off the 2022 concurrency. So now you have something. Saying Randall has problems of, this current school year, probably has a.
Uh, but this is the county, not.
Yeah, Randall, he's got some public schools.
Okay.
He's got that.
From Carroll County Public Schools, I put it in Excel, but.
Okay.
This is a document. And I think if you just look up Carroll County Public Schools projections, 2023, it would be like the freshest thing that comes up.
Great. Okay. So I will update that. Libraries.
Yeah, okay, we know that. How is that, how was that a plan?
Yeah. So do we want to take it out? I mean, it's not.
I suppose it doesn't hurt anything to have it in there.
And I personally have made great use of the Innovation Center, so taken both cooking classes and podcasting classes there.
I have not even been in there yet. Used to go to the library all the time when kids were little.
I lived a lot.
All the time. Oh, yeah, when I, when I was a kid, but even when my kids were kids, you went there a lot.
And also you can get eBooks on your Kindle now from the Carroll County Public Library.
You can?
Yes.
I did not know that.
So the Maryland Library Consortium, of which Carroll County Public Library is a member, allows you to get eBooks on your Kindle.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I make.
Maryland's fabulous for that.
And I make great use of it. That perhaps should be in the plan because obviously. Okay, public safety. I know this is moot.
I got information off the concurrency.
Okay. Oh, this is perfect. I will replace that with that.
Should be specifically in this. This is our plan.
Yeah.
Is that just the fire that you had?
Fire and events, yeah. No, I didn't do anything for, for police, but there was some information that I gave on concurrency.
I mean, you should at least talk about that, you know, we have a deputy who's the chair between.
Yeah, I think I changed this sentence previously. Police protection is provided by the county through the community sheriff program. Period, end of sentence.
I don't know, were we still, because there for a while, we had one of those, kind of more as dedicated.
Brian Calusi was dedicated, so was Mark Towson. I think, I think our friend, Mr. McGinnis, is essentially that way. No?
He's, he's both Union Bridge.
No, I mean, but. No, I mean, but to these two towns.
Yes.
As opposed to showing up in Eldersburg.
Yes.
And there's nothing, the town pays the county.
We are not paying currently.
Yeah.
It's just a deputy. Right.
Should community, should program, I am assuming, also be capitalized?
I don't know. Because I'm not sure it is identified that way by the sheriff's office.
Yeah, I'm not sure it is.
You would have kind of require a written agreement.
No, I'm just, if, if they, if they identified it that way, or if they just say, the sheriff's office has jurisdiction here and not there.
I'm not sure it's a program.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean.
Longer, I think at one point it was.
It was.
But I don't believe it is.
I guess when we stopped paying for it, they couldn't afford the capital.
Just want to say, you want to just, police protection provided by the Carroll County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, I mean, that should, should do it. And whether we had resident troopers 15 years ago, who cares?
Oh, I thought that's.
Yeah.
Name the man who died that was the sheriff, that was the New Windsor cop, Tude Freitz.
We did have a resident trooper for a while.
Oh, yeah.
He, that had to have been a board.
Yeah.
I think Mark, I thought Mark did a lot of stuff, he was very active in the community. He came to all the events, whether he was actually working.
I see him around still sometimes.
I think he was doing a car.
Maybe.
So he was doing both for a while, but then he then stopped, the sheriff's not as years in there, and started his next dimension.
But I, you know, I just don't, I don't know that we need all the rest of that stuff about ratios and development limits and blah.
Okay, well, and I've got the new language from Drew. Water and sewage, do we even want to get into this, or maybe we can just, less said, the better?
Well, we, we probably want to say that we operate, you know, internally, we operate our own systems, but to have, you know, point this and point that, I think are unnecessary, if not actively unwise at this point.
We want to say we're pursuing future water.
We're always looking for improvement, improvements to the system.
Yeah.
Certain future water sources.
Yeah.
And improvements to the sewage system, if we go with that in our stuff, that's a big, big ticket. There's a sentence or two in there that can be called out. Doesn't look like it, actually.
Due to limited customer, the, the share of the cost of that spring, yeah, because.
Put in, we know the darn bills are high, stop bothering us.
It's equivalent to your cable bill.
Yeah.
Or maybe less in some cases.
True. Anytime I point that out on Facebook, people jump on me, but it's true.
And if you had to pick one.
Life saving water or mindless entertainment?
I don't know, it's tough.
A lot of people don't drink water.
I did service.
Use the other part of the system.
I will tell you, when I was in high school, I did service camp in Appalachia, and the number of people that actually had cable but also had an outhouse.
It was a carload.
That is very true, there may very well have been a correlation. Stormwater management. And again, you know, I think that, that we're subject to county stormwater management and water resource management ordinances. We have not adopted them, we are subject to them. That's a button for me.
So did we get through, we got through the, the water and sewer.
Well, I don't, I think we decided to put in one general.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
The table and all that stuff is.
No, I don't even know. It's out of date as soon as it's out of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably out of date six months after it was put in.
So I will delete the table because I don't think it's relevant, and I don't think anybody cares. Sorry, did I say that out loud?
Well, there's a lot of really great information there that's still utilized today in its, in its current.
Yeah.
Not something that we would even try to keep in.
And I would, and I know that would be available at the county level.
This, this stuff here?
Yeah.
This, this is stuff that Gary and Wayne keep track of, and heads and flows and.
Unintended.
All right, so stormwater management.
Yeah, and I have a note to replace with something general about a variety of regulations implemented by the county, and that county regulations are applicable in the town.
Thank you.
And I'm going to make this better grammar while I'm here. And then I have a question about whether, about this paragraph as to whether or not we want to keep it. Because virtually all areas, it's right before, it's the last paragraph in that section.
Which one, the town adopted these regulations?
Uh, no, because virtually all, all of the areas identified for future development in the growth area are either forest, et cetera, et cetera, because we've done that growth. So do we want to keep that paragraph? It's the last paragraph in that section.
Do they need to know our soil characteristics?
I was going to say, the extensive occurrence of cars is extremely important to a lot of members of our community.
Well, it is when their backyard disappears.
But again, given that we've done that growth, is that paragraph necessary?
I'll move the cover by saying we fall under the county's regulations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paragraph is gone, and I will just put some nice generic language at the introduction. And then under recreation, I've done a little bit of my own research here, found Carroll County's specific recreation plan, and then I also wanted to note that 30 areas of recreation per 1,000 people is a national metric.
So we don't need it, do we want to publicize the fact that we don't need it? As opposed to saying the town has pickleball, tennis.
Do we have pickleball?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
We do now.
Oh, we, oh.
It's busy.
Get down there in the mornings.
Okay.
All the court, and there is a dozen people down there.
Yeah, I mean, I knew we had the frisbee golf, I didn't know we had pickleball now.
Friesbee golf, we have baseball fields, we have basketball.
On a quiet day, you probably can hear it from your house.
Probably.
Yeah, pickleball is, is staggeringly popular. My office in Westminster was. Yeah. Um, my office in Westminster looked out over the city park. And you couldn't get near the place in decent weather from a month ago till Christmas. That place is, that place is hopping.
Isn't there a place down in Dinkspur that's in York?
Yes, Dinkers Dills or something.
Bill, yeah, I saw the name like.
What the hell? What is that, is it a pickle factory? Ah, I bet it's pickleball.
And they franchise that because they're building in Fredrick.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't think they're building one.
Find a need and fill it.
So this, like the.
That most bizarre combination of tennis and.
Well, it's ping pong on steer.
Yeah, it's, well, it's like some sort of bizarre combination of tennis, ping pong, and wiffle ball.
I mean, I've, I've never played, so is this played with a wiffle ball?
Yeah.
It's a lightweight ball, I know.
Yeah, it's, it's tennis, it's tennis with a ping pong ball paddle and a wiffle ball.
Yeah.
I wonder how drunk they were when they.
Pretty drunk.
And how, obviously, they went through the real tennis rackets. Well, I'm surprised you didn't get to a bad mid-berge. We may need to modify.
Has acreage, so December 2009, has acreage changed, I think, for recreational lands?
I mean, we had, we've added the frisbee golf since that, but I don't know whether you would increase acreage based on our frisbee golf, because it was part of the walking.
It was already part of.
Yeah, it wasn't.
An open area, yeah.
It's just another, another service in the usage, right?
Now, we picked up where they filled in the lagoons, and see now what the acreage.
No doubt.
We haven't developed it.
No.
Either, I remember we picked up our little park here.
Even want to deal with trying to determine the acreage or just put in.
I think it was 100 acres, I really do, it was so big, so big.
Thank you, Edna Ferber.
It's the biggest park I've ever seen.
Wow. And service. Is it important that we add all the acreage called out?
I don't think so.
In our plan?
I don't think so.
I mean, there's no.
I don't know of a, of a regulation that says you must have.
I, I get all this stuff, but. This is our conference.
Yeah, this is, we, we do what we can, whenever we can, to provide high-quality recreational opportunities to the citizens of the town and surrounding areas.
And we are looking to build out and invest in more facilities throughout the.
Yes.
I would use the existing inventory. If they, yeah, if they can come down, or, yeah, a little, like.
I mean, we are, we are actively looking there, we are actively looking to put a, a basketball court in there where.
Or Apple.
I mean, so, I don't necessarily need the specifics in there, but I would like to say that we are.
Yeah, we're, we continue to actively.
Okay, so what if I delete the first two paragraphs and just go with currently 41.4 acres of recreation land serve or plan to serve the residents of New Windsor?
Yeah, see, I don't know if that's correct or not.
I don't know if that's correct or not, that's the thing.
Yeah. And then if someone asks, where are these?
Where are they, yeah.
What is a little one across the street?
Yeah, I don't know, I want to try to do that.
Okay, so.
Majority is open space.
Here it has existing inventory apart from.
Yeah, I would think the existing inventory we should keep.
But. Intention so that are less necessary.
You have to add a frisbee golf to that.
The ball fields, everything that Crigg Drive, which is that 6.83, Lehigh now owns, but I think the town.
Got a long-term lease on, yeah.
Which they don't get, they don't get used.
Yet.
Do we need the acreage of all of these, or can we just?
That's what we're saying, I don't think that, I don't think it's necessary, and it may not even be prudent because things change, you pick up a little bit here, you lose some over here because you, you're going to give an easement to somebody, who knows?
Atley Ridge Trail and Frisbee, should I add, and Frisbee Golf Course? Or slash Frisbee Golf Course?
Yes.
Yes, the Frisbee Golf Course also, it's on the other side of where the golf is on.
That's the new section, you're right.
Exactly, maybe you can say it's in that Atley Ridge neighborhood. It's, you know, it's listed as off Water Street, but you can't access it from Water Street. We've got to put in the walking trail.
Just go there and wave.
Yeah.
We talk about the green space and cricket field.
That's the main.
Yeah.
That's a pitch.
Pitch.
Cricket pitch.
The batting plate, cricket field. You know, the 711 people.
Um, unsurprised.
Yeah. They, they play out there every Sunday. A lot.
Too far with the pain of having, you know, where they're not. Because I don't think there are any. Ball teams, New Windsor, on the.
Ball field.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, main teams are anymore, but. Nobody's using those, you know, they are using the.
Live.
Live ball field.
Yes.
So as far as small kids playing up, up in the main teams.
Emily, we have enough information.
I think so.
For recreation.
Yeah, I, I've taken out the majority of, well, I've taken out the first several paragraphs. I'm going to leave some of this acreage in terms of the brethren service in the New Windsor Middle School. Now, additional passive recreational trail facilities are anticipated with development of the Snyder Summit Project. That is now current. And I do know there's trails there, but they don't connect to anything, so they're only accessible to people that live in Snyder Summit unless.
Those, they did put a bridge in it, and that comes up, Hillside Drive.
Okay.
You can't walk into town on Hillside Drive.
Right, it's connected.
Yes.
Okay. Because when I walk there, I still walk on the side of the highway, so I'll have to look for that bridge.
Yeah, you can come all the way down, like, you know where Hillside Drive is? Yeah, there's a bridge, they're down the bottom of the hill, past the building.
Okay.
And then you can walk all the way up to, and then you're stuck, then you have to walk on the highway.
You said you were leaving acreage in where?
Um, so the approximate 3.18 acre portion of the Brethren Service Center, approximately 18.5 acres of recreational ball fields.
So that's not, I don't think we should leave that there.
Okay.
That 3.8 is, is now owned by Springdale Prep School.
Okay.
That's not public property anymore.
Okay.
And what else did you say?
The 18.5 areas of acres of recreational ball fields on the New Windsor Middle School parcel.
So. That's the, where Springdale Prep may purchase?
May or may not, yeah. I'm, I'm, their, their intention is to purchase. In which case it will be private property. But we're going to have all those town gown partnerships.
I don't know, what, what's your thought on leaving that in there? Or do we, want to just say something like, we count.
I was going to say, can we wiggle it? Yeah. Because you don't want to put in here that it will be private, because we don't know exactly what that's going to be.
By the time we get this published, it could be.
Yeah.
Public, or, you know, I, I don't know.
Currently owned. Currently owned.
Yeah, well, just say that as of... I don't think it currently has ability to be used.
We have access.
Has the publication date or...
Well, or you could just say it's, there's, it's anticipated that this property will be conveyed. And if so, it is uncertain what access the town might be afforded. Something like that.
Because we may work on it.
Yeah.
Now, if they do purchase it.
Okay.
That's what your rugby stuff is, right?
Mm-hmm.
It would be a shame for these access to that.
Yeah.
So it says the inventory of all community recreation area, also includes New Windsor Park, Harb, Harb, ground. We, I mean, that's privately owned.
Awesome.
It's privately owned, and it gets used. We require insurance.
Yeah, you don't want just anybody wandering around.
We do that.
Okay.
Because we've had different ones wanting, you know, and we said, well, we require proof of insurance, and we, you know, we own that.
You can be sued.
Attractive nuisance. I learned about that in law school. Attractive nuisance.
Not applicable in Maryland, general. What is applicable everywhere is if anybody might have a pocket somebody can stick a hand into, they're gonna get sued.
Remember you do that work to be used as...
I was gonna say, is that used by the public? I thought that was all stormwater management up in there. I, I mean, I'm not lot by lot familiar with, with those things, but...
Oh, I was looking, I'm just reading out there. It said, the Hillside Parcel, Jason's in the Blue Ridge Manor, she's got a highlight. Currently unapproved and unused, well...
Yeah, that should not, we would, I think we would end up frowning upon, you know, when...
Yeah.
Doing anything in there.
Yeah, no, we don't want that people to think that that's a playground.
Okay.
I was gonna complain there when I got home tonight.
That's your way.
The wooded hillside going towards 31, I mean, how far back can these lots go? You know, it's just like a buffer. To me, it's like a buffers over between the...
So all of this... Should go? Is that what you're saying?
I think it should all go.
Okay. It's gone.
Look how much, how many trees we're saving.
Since we, yeah, since we're not putting in the ratio of populations of the amount...
To park in, all that.
No.
Okay, the town has recently restructured their fee schedule for water and sewage, sewage. I'm assuming that is no longer accurate.
Well, certainly not recent.
We actually did restructure our...
Well, we restructured it several years ago.
Yeah, but this, if you don't recently for two years, it's valid.
I know, I know. I do the reservation.
By the time this is printed, so I don't think we'd want to mention that.
Unless you want to, again, put general language that monitors the rate structure to assure that costs are covered by all users or something like that.
Getting close to the page, do you want to finish the chapter, or are we all...
We've got about page and a half.
Outside, finish it?
Yeah.
You don't make time and a half, right?
Right, yeah. Boo hoo.
And we blew a lot of time trying to actually make this show up.
We private out here at 7:30 if we stop it at the end of the chapter. So then all that might use in population, protect them to meet the threshold of, I mean, that all of that is...
What did I delete? The growth area was reduced by approximately 93 acres I have deleted. I don't have anything else deleted, though.
Is that paragraph still accurate, number nine? About the goal and fringes?
I think so. What I'm, what I don't know is if there actually is a Little Pipe Creek Watershed Rural Legacy Area. I feel like we already had this conversation once.
Yeah.
I also think "town" in the very last sentence should be capitalized. See, we'll transition from the town to the rural areas. What do you think?
Yes, it's capitalized everywhere else.
Everywhere else, yeah.
See, no reason.
I would say you can get rid of Little Pipe Creek Watershed Rural Legacy, period.
Get rid of it?
Well, we don't know whether it exists.
It does.
You did, all right. I knew we had talked about it. I just didn't know where we landed.
But it's out.
Well, it might be within the area. If someone had an overwhelming urge to preserve their land and went to the community comprehensive plan to find out how, they would be able to read it.
So first off, can they take it?
Exactly.
Emily, where are you?
Rural buffers and transition areas.
Number nine.
I don't think of that. I'd leave that whole paragraph just like it is.
Okay, I think that's good. Okay, check. Move to 10?
Yeah.
And 10 doesn't say much of anything.
Yeah, and then we'll finish this chapter.
Look somewhere else.
And I did delete, the growth area was reduced by approximately 93 acres. That was some decision you guys made earlier.
But, I haven't gone there yet, but the chapter, which is referred to in 10, is actually called Natural and Agricultural Resources. So maybe the, this should say, the Natural and Agricultural Resources Chapter describes how wonderful we are.
Do we do that with specific parcel?
I...
Unless ultimately we're gonna change that. Whatever, they just should match at the end of the day.
Oh, okay, you were ahead of me. So then, the what chapter?
It's just called, it's chapter nine, but it's just called Natural and Agricultural Resources. Now, maybe once we get there, we change its name, because I haven't really looked at all of that yet, but...
Okay.
That would, that would replace from the sentence above, right?
Instead of just saying the natural resources chapter, just give it the name that the plan gives it.
Yeah, under 10, the first sentence to read, the natural and agricultural resources.
Yes, I made that change.
The rest of that is still true?
About the second paragraph, well-located parcels?
Yeah, this is probably no longer true.
Well, they are well-located.
They're referring, yeah. The hub parcel.
And they're talking about the one below that. Oh, you're talking, I'm sorry. You're talking about the...
Well, it says well-located parcel designated for residential. I mean, they're, they're highly designated.
Well, they're not designated with G A B today.
Yeah, they're not.
So the second, that paragraph, there's two? So that paragraph should go away?
So right now, right now, today, you have four lots. There's nothing within our G A B.
Yeah, but this is talking about outside the corporate limits.
Well, the G A B is outside the corporate limits.
G A B is everything.
Okay.
So that's all.
Growth area boundary.
At the county level, at Dayton, that was just all agricultural. What, you know, it's either ag preservation or...
Well, there's a lot of ag preservation, but it could be designated agricultural and still have houses planted on it.
It would have to resign, you know.
It, well, depends on what kind of houses you're gonna plant. And how many others there are in all of those development issues.
The, these tracts will provide sufficient future growth to enable New Windsor to realize this vision that's got to go. Even if we have some parcels in our G A B that could turn, we don't have anything that's going to realize those numbers that Bart had in there that showed there were going to be 2,500 people in 2067.
Sentence is gone. Yeah. I'm thinking the whole paragraph.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And even the second.
Yeah, because we really do not anticipate a whole lot of future municipal growth outside the existing corporate limit.
That's the hipper proper.
Okay, so that stays.
That stays.
So do we call it the 2007 growth area, or do we just call it the growth area?
Growth area also includes 10-acre, 10-something, 2000s push-on. The G A B, period.
Yeah.
Get rid of that one that added.
Okay. So we'll start with chapter seven, and hopefully we will not have as much trouble connecting the laptop at the next meeting.
As long as Ryan's here.
Same exact problem with the TV in my trailer, so...
That's why we never put a TV in our trailer. We looked at it and went, I don't even know how to do that.
You've got a number seven and finish up here.
Oh, yes, we actually still have an agenda.
Okay. Upcoming events, the cleanup day on April the 27th. Dave, is there time for that?
I believe it's eight, 8:00 a.m.
At the town park or?
Right, right here, town hall, we will meet.
Here at the hall.
Yes, anybody that can come would sure be appreciated.
And the town council meeting on the first, May 1st, our Carnival 21st to the 25th. And parade is on Wednesday night. And then, does it all seek the next planning commission meeting on the 28th, since it's a holiday? It's a holiday.
It's Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Right. That's why we moved it.
So we're gonna have it on the Tuesday?
That's what I think was agreed last.
Yes.
So put that mark at on your calendar, though. Any other announcements, or?
Also, on the 27th, the cleanup day is also bulk trash day here in town. From 8:00 to 12:00 down at Gear Lane. If you have any bulk trash items, you can take them down there as well. Bulk trash items are the items you normally don't put on in your trash, the bigger.
I try to, they just don't take them. You can always put them out.
Any other announcements? Am I having anything to share? Not dear emotions for the government?
So moved.
Ryan, second by Dave. All those in favor of seconded five to say aye.
Aye.
So carry. Thank you all.
Thank you.